...the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Start with our council activity reports. It's been a quiet couple of weeks for me. It's going to get busy. Had a meeting at the fire department last week. I attended their business meeting along with a special meeting of the relief association, discussions about ongoing management of the monies from that. We had our city council public work session last week. Everybody was there for that. I also attended on April 27th, a special loss and control workshop with the League of Minnesota Cities. Tarek and I went to that, spent the day in St. Cloud. Number of pretty interesting things that will come out of that. Finally, we had the hospital open house. I think at least a number of us went to that. I wasn't able to get to the Highway 23 groundbreaking, but I know Paul, you said you were going to go, so if you did, you can maybe tell us, but I'll take that as a no.
I'm there.
Yeah, otherwise, that's it for me. Turning it over to you, Neil.
Okay, April 25th, we had the police coverage meeting about policing and township. I was disappointed with the turnout. There are probably more people from the township than the city. And sometimes think people really don't care what's happening and they put all their faith in us. Sometimes we like to hear what their opinion is. On the 28th, the Lions Club had their spaghetti supper. I attended. Went to the spring cleanup site. We cooperated with the township in partnership up at their parking lot. May 3rd was the work session with Public Works discussing goals and needs for the next five to 10 years. And tonight, we had Public Works. There'll be some things on the next agenda or two that we discuss.
Great, thank you. Megan?
I was at the police and fire meeting as well, discussing policing in the township. I was at the Lions Dinner too, and manned the noodles, and at the citywide cleanup. I helped out with that as well for the third year. It seemed like attendance was down a little bit, but we were thinking maybe mostly due to the weather. But as always, that's a good event. I was at the Public Works thing as well. And we had Park and Tree where we discussed a new swimming dock and dog park upkeep and filling the vacancies on that board.
Chief?
I was at the same Public Works meeting and the special police and fire. I also did the center care tour of the new hospital. And I also was at the last chamber board man meeting. There's a couple of things coming up there that's happening. The circus is coming to town and they're starting a networking program. We're going to different businesses each month. So, that's it.
And I saw there's a joint partnership with the library on digital marketing on two weeks, yeah, two weeks from now.
I think it's 22nd.
That'll be great. Paul?
I was at the police and fire special session, did not make it, that Highway 23 groundbreaking due to threat of snow, so decided to pass on that one.
All right, on then to our department head reports. Bill?
First of all-
You brought your A-game with the audience that we have here.
I did. Everyone, this is Gary Bicey. He's a manager of Rogers Municipal Liquor and Bar. He's also on the board director for MMBA. He was here this evening because he's doing the training, server training for the fire department for three days.
Did you bring a job application for him?
He's very busy.
We can't afford him.
Yeah, you can't afford him. He does really... Anyway, thank you.
Paul, you're looking for an assistant.
Yes.
I thought you meant for my job.
I was just made of an opera. Anyway, so in front of you, you have the numbers so far year-to-date. Sales are still strong. They're not as strong as the COVID numbers. COVID, those numbers are gone. We're trending, just like a lot of our friends in the business are, sales are starting to slow a touch due to everybody going back to work. Plus, we had a really soft hard winter, which kept a lot of people at home. We're hoping that the road construction will do like it did last year and help business. And if our lake friends are back, we look for those to increase over the summer months like they do every year. Our margins are down. We cleaned house this year with inventory. If it wasn't moving, it went out the door to make room for the up-and-coming products, the canned cocktails, the big push in that area. And then legislative stuff, I'll talk about in a second. Our labor's a major focus this year for myself. And right now, we're down about $4,500 as of March. I don't have April's numbers yet to see compared to year-to-date, like-to-like. Loyalty members on our loyalty program, there's still, there are up to 3,600 people involved. So, we have some very good loyal customers. I just returned from several events. Week ago Thursday, we were at Proof Alliance banquet in the cities for fetal alcohol spectrum disorder. We raised $200,000. Belinda Zach and I attended with other members of MMBA, had a great evening, left the next morning for MMBA conference, pulling the trailer with prizes and goodies, and spent the weekend with friends, going to classes, learning a lot, and just kind of reconnecting, seeing what everybody else has got going on in their world. Probably the big push talk was the CBD THC, which we should have some answers here shortly to see what we can sell, how we can do it, as we're waiting for the two sides to iron things out. Major cooler reset, bought quite a bit of shelving to try and make more room, more organized. Would love to have you come down and give a tour and see what it looks like. Jean will be there tomorrow night, Tarek will as well. So, and to wind things up, we have our last wine club next Tuesday night at the American Legion. And it'll be a walk-around event, and that will be featuring summer cocktails. So, if you look at the numbers, have any questions, please call. Stop, Al.
Any questions for Bill? All right. Chief?
Thank you. So, we've got a, not a lot of things to update, but some significant things you guys will notice on the agenda tonight. We've got a few resignations within the department that are coming before you guys. We knew Officer Feigum would be officially finally retiring after a lot of years. So, at the end of the school year, he'll be officially done. Officer O'Brien as well has moved on to other endeavors outside of law enforcement. So, we wish both those guys well, and that'll be another one that we'll discuss later on. As some of you know, if not all of you know, we did have a little whoopsie, if you will, with the squad car last week. It ran into the city well at the airport. Minor damage to that, I believe Ron may give an update on that, but the well has been fixed and is functioning again, as far as I know. Cody is done with his DRE training. He finished that up this last week. He will head to Philadelphia in July to complete the practical portion. All of that is grant-funded, so the only thing the city is responsible for are the pages and his meals. Obviously, with some of the resignations that we've had, as of right now, we don't have really too many staffing challenges, but I did have a meeting with the sheriff's office today. We'll be talking with some neighboring communities, but if we do end up with some openings, how we can make sure to cover those shifts. We'll probably talk more about that at the working session tomorrow. We also discussed the township and the adjustments to what calls we are being sent to. And I think we generally have a good idea on what direction things are going there. They understand that we are going to be prioritizing priority calls, and those will be the main things that we're getting piled out to. So, things like mailbox damage, thefts, those types of things that are non-emergent, non-things that can wait, will be things that we will no longer be called to. We also discussed calls out to the highway to assist the state patrol, and ultimately, if there are deputies in the area, that they're still primarily responsible for that area. So, I think we'll see a good path forward, positive path forward with that.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief? Great. Ron?
All right, thank you. First of all, on Friday, we have the Water Festival coming up, and that's where we take the entire fifth grade class out and first give them a tour of the waste treatment plant and then take them out to the Columbus Ministries, their whole day of water activity. Parks are opening this year week. If any resident wants, they get reservations for either of them, they can, or on the web is available. Reminder also, residents, please sweep your sidewalks off, spruce the city up a little bit, as we are keeping the streets swept as much as we can right now. Also, along that same line, as you start to mow your grass this spring, if you do mow your grass out into the street, please sweep it back up, try and keep that phosphorus out of our neighborhood and likes here. Compost site is open, obviously. Just a reminder to residents, please utilize the donation box out there. It is very helpful. Crack ceiling is complete in town here. Beach Park, I think there is a letter in your packet, I think it's June the 3rd. They have an open house to see what work that we participated in down there building the sidewalks. Well, well, number five is going to be done in the week of the 22nd, I believe it is. The Public Works Committee, we did have a meeting tonight, and we had our core main in there, the people that handle all our meter reading system. And they did talk about the AMI reading, and AMI is the Advanced Meter Infrastructure. Basically, we could, all the metering would be done from City Hall here, and basically it talks to City Hall every meter every four hours. And if we want, we can go back and pull hourly readings off of those meters. And on the spring cleanup, talking about the county, it definitely was down, but it coincides exactly with the county has going on in the month of April. They said it's just been the weather at their facility in Wake Park. It's exactly the same. So...
Any questions? Thank you. Ron?
All right. Yeah, I also attended the police and fire public hearing, and I was with Sean at the safety and loss workshop hosted by the LMC in St. Cloud. Went to the center care open house, had the special council public works meeting. I also attended the park and tree with Megan. And I also attended the Recoree Trail Board Meeting last week to discuss getting support for the DNR to do the extension of the unfinished trail, Glacial Lakes Trail that goes through Painesville. So, hopefully, all the communities along the trail will be supporting that. And then, of course, with Bill and Megan, I was at the Lions Dinner, and I was the sauce guy.
All right. Any questions for Tarek? All right, thank you both. The food at the dinner was delicious.
Was.
All right, on then to the adoption of our public... Is there anybody here for our public forum? Okay. Adoption of our consent agenda includes the minutes and the meetings listed on our agenda, the vouchers totaling $345,271.53. Those are on our update. We have a number of resignations, both of some employees, part-timers, along with various board members. Is there a motion to adopt or approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Soini to approve the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Cares? Right, on to new business. Ryan, if it's okay with you, we've got some things for the chamber. Donna said she really doesn't care about listening to your presentation, so...
I'm hurt.
So, we'll bump ahead, we'll jump to item H and then I on our agenda. Both of them are chamber activities, starting with H on page 32, discussion regarding the circus. So, Jacob, Donna, take it away.
Mayor and councilors, Jacob Bircham, executive director of the chamber. Joining with me is-
Donna, chamber president.
And we're delighted to say we're bringing the circus to town. So, this Culpeper and Merryweather Circus, they've been around for over 100 years. They're out of Huko, Oklahoma, Huko, Oklahoma. And they came and approached us and said, "We haven't been to Painesville in a while, so would you guys like us to be hosted again this year?" So, we're looking to have that event at the same location as our carnival. They have certain parameters that need to be taken place with the amount of size. We thought that would be an adamant space for everything. They kind of set the scheduled time, so we're planning for July 29th. It's a Saturday, and showtime's at 2:00 and 4:30. Presale tickets will be available closer to the event. Like I said before, the layout we're looking at, as well as the agenda packet, same as the Town Country Days carnival. And are there any questions from council?
Are they performing twice?
Yes.
The same day?
Correct.
That's like that.
Do they do the advertising, or does the chamber?
They put together some posters and different promotional advertising stuff for us, or together. So, they would be putting that together and helping us with the advertising, so it'd be kind of split advertising.
Because this would be an event that should bring people in from other communities.
I have a comment for you. I've seen this show in Isle, Minnesota, and it was absolutely packed. And for those who wanted to see it again, the next night, went down to Mora, which again was packed. So, this was a very good show, and I would recommend that we all just put forward on this.
Yeah. The only question I had is, they really want to set up and just do two shows in one day and then move on? But that's their choice, I suppose. Yeah.
They're traveling all over. I think they're going to Annandale, possibly Atwater, I think during that same week sometime. So, they got their schedule set, and that's the time to be available in our area.
Better it is a good day.
I think that's their 100 years of experience doing it.
Yeah. Sure.
I'm good with it, and thank you guys for... I know Jacob, you said they reached out to you, but thanks for doing the diligence and getting it wrapped up and brought here. Appreciate it, it would be great. Unless there's any more questions for Jacob or Donna, a motion would be in order.
It looks like, those animals they have are large cats, I'm assuming, you know, lions. But is that something that we need to do anything special for as far as ordinances go? If there's animals in city limits?
Chickens.
No.
No, you're talking-
I know they've got some pretty big cats.
Yeah. Is that what it is? Okay, I thought it was something like that, but I couldn't remember what. I just wanted to double-check.
And we will arrange for like waste removal, because that was the one thing that they have. We just have to get that out.
Ron would prefer you don't throw it in the storm pond right next to it.
No, I think we're gonna get a skid loader to haul it out.
What do you guys plan, I mean, are you looking at setting the back barn up for parking in the same area that we're looking, you know, if we look at the carnival? Are they going to be posted up? I mean, what's the parking situation going to be looking like?
I would think similar to the carnival. Yeah, it seems to work, as long as people park where they're supposed to park.
I just want to make sure that they weren't like stopped, like they stopped parts of front, I mean, I'm trying to park them for them.
Yeah, there's a 24-hour man that comes 24 hours before the event, and he stakes out everything. We do have to meet with him at that point, so we can see there and say, "Okay, you start here, make sure you leave enough room," just like the carnival for parking. So, that's a good thought.
All right. Well, I'll make the motion to approve large shows and assemblies application for the Chamber of Honors Circus on July 29th, 2023, at 605 Lake Avenue, and to waive fees.
Motion by Hertzberg is on the action sheet, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Brick. Any further discussion? Chief, with that being a county road, are we able to limit at the departure time that that be like a right turn only to get people out of there quicker, or?
Probably not, but as long as we know about it, I can probably get somebody down there, and we can make sure to have somebody down there directing the traffic.
That's my only concern, is I know a backup I can get during the carnival, so...
And when the carnival comes to go, this will be very specific, so...
Any further discussion? All those in favor, then indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you. Okay, on to the carnival.
Yes, we're looking at the same thing that we've done in other years, so we have the parade, the same route as it's been. Same thing with the staging area. Residents will be notified that they only need to keep their cars off the roads, we can have the staging area available. Same location for the carnival, the hospital lot there, working with other members as well to make sure everything is where it needs to be and planned out as it has been in the last couple of years. Also requesting for use of the city generator. We do have one of our board members, Eric Gudy, I'm sorry, not board members, chamber member, committed to hooking up the generator if the council approves the use of that. So, we do have electrician ready to go to hook that up. This will be also for our kids' night on Wednesday night at the gazebo park, and then Thursday through Saturday at the ambulance garage for the carnival piece.
Can we do this on the consent agenda in future years?
We certainly can, it just gives you an opportunity to ask questions. The only question I had that was indicated was if your garden is not specified on the map anywhere, so I don't know if that's needed or not, but it's not on there.
Okay. It was our understanding that that is up to the Lions Club and the restaurant that is going to be doing the catering with that piece. We give them the same spot, so however they set up is, we're giving that layout. However they fit up in there, I guess I don't know.
Chief?
So, the only other thing that I guess I would ask from a public safety side, is we do have a norm that says no alcohol on public streets, public containers. So, I would ask that the council define the space that people can, you know, we had talked before at the last meeting, that seem like the council's okay with the grounds themselves, but putting that defined limit on where that is, otherwise, somebody walking around, you know, downtown, it's gonna be really hard for us to do anything with and enforce if we don't define that area, that the alcohol's allowed from the beer garden. Just correct me if I'm wrong, Jacob, but it's my understanding that they are not planning on defining where people can go at home.
I don't believe so.
But they're gonna allow them to roam with their beverage, which...
I thought our motion, when we approved it, included just saying on the grounds.
On the grounds, on the parks.
Where on the grounds is the question?
I guess I don't remember saying that, that's why I'm bringing it up. Because I thought it was a lot, because we didn't know what did they ask before, because that was the next night. So, just wanted to make sure we got some clarity as to exactly what that looks like, so I can talk to guys.
Neil, did I hear your question on there? Nope?
No, I don't think I seen it.
Okay. Maybe it was just a sign.
My question is, maybe it should exclude the parking lot. That way, they aren't taking it to the car, or...
Well, how about we do this? We've got a proposed motion on here, let's make that first. I like where you're going with that idea, and then we can do that in a separate motion, so that there's clarity. So, we address what's on here first, and then we do by separate motion, the area where that would be relaxed. So, not thinking about alcohol provisions right now, but is there a motion on the action sheet to allow the parade permit, the closures, et cetera?
I'll make the motion to approve the parade permit. Temporary street closures, large show assembly permit, waive a large assembly show, and show application and investigation fees. Allow the use of the city's generator as long as they have a licensed electrician on site to hook it up for camping, and allow all the events to take place at 605 Lake Avenue for the 2023 Town and Country Days.
All right, motion by Thielen, as stated on the action sheet, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini. Any further discussion on this part? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Okay. Now, on the looker, Neil, I liked what you were saying with limiting it to the active carnival area, restricting it from parking.
Oh, so could be a fence from the parking lot, or not really, probably?
There usually isn't.
No, we don't normally have a fence for that, and I guess the way the board approved forward, moving forward, is the vendor that wants to put, have the alcohol sale, it's kind of up to them of where they're going to be marking it off.
That they would take charge of that, and that would not be our...
Yeah. Wasn't it marked off somehow with a rope line or something last year?
No.
For parking?
The parking area.
Parking. Yeah, I think we ran ropes.
No, just in the driveway piece, where people could know they don't park right in the driveway, but that was the only piece that was blocked. We had stakes out there for knowing where the park knows, knows their end-to-end.
Yeah.
I think something essentially, it's just some stakes that would sign them, no alcohol passes point, would probably be, you know, a few of those stakes that we're looking at, defining where it is. And then make it posted even where they're serving it, you know, no alcohol parking lot. It's not like we're gonna sit there and go out to hammer people, it's, you know, hold on, educate them, not letting it, people driving up there, so...
Okay. So, I'm hearing a recommendation then for a motion that the alcohol be allowed in Town and Country Days without being permitted in the parking lot, and that signs be posted marking where that boundary line is.
I think, yeah, I agree with that motion, but it should be not the chambers, it should be the beer garden people to put posts of signs, I think.
Do you want to make that into motion?
Sure.
There's a motion by Soini indicating that the beer garden will be allowed to operate at Town and Country Days on the grounds of 605 Lake Avenue, within that property only, not permitted in the parking area, and whoever is operating the alcohol sales shall be tasked with designating and identifying where that boundary line is.
No, just posting signs?
And just posting signs to mark the boundary.
Well, to save...
Seconded by Hertzberg. And I'm not understanding that to mean fencing, just...
Right, signs.
Just a sign.
Just a couple of signs.
All right. Motion by Soini, seconded by Hertzberg. Hopefully, Kristen got all of that. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? Cares? All right. Thank you guys. Do you want your check? Can I?
You signed it.
Save a sale.
Save a sale.
Save your bond fees off the way you go.
What's the theme this year?
Breaking the process.
I know, breaking the process. I'm saving the tax dollars of this city 60 cents. Thank you.
Probably 62 now.
Well, it's metered mail, so it's still...
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Is I being naughty again?
Always.
Am I getting in trouble again?
Always.
Well, the audit was right there, so it's fine and all.
Ryan, can I give them their check? We approved it.
I didn't see anything.
Go ahead and talk to us about the audits, sir.
Yes.
We've got our books jumping back up to our 2022 audit, page eight of our agenda, along with all of the materials here that were presented.
All right, so I handed out three separate booklets to each of you, but the one that says "Presentation of the audited financial statements," that's the one we're going to focus on right now. So, we're going to walk through the high-level results here of the 2022 audit, and if you flip into the first page of that packet, there's a page that says "Audit Process and Opinion" at the top. Just like in the past, going to give you a quick overview, a quick reminder of what exactly it is we do during an audit each year. Basically, an audit consists of us obtaining your financial information and records from throughout the past year, 2022. We perform a number of procedures over this information. So, we perform various inquiries with people inside the city, various analytical procedures as far as looking at your revenues and expenses and activity for the year, comparing that to industry trends and maybe prior-year averages, and then lots and lots of detailed testing, so looking at invoices and sampling receipts and disbursements, and looking at reports from the county and the state, all for the purpose of verifying the accuracy of the transactions in your accounting system that make up the numbers in the financial statements. So, based on the results of these procedures this year, we've given you what's called an unmodified opinion, so that is a clean opinion, and that's the best opinion you can achieve. So, that is the high-level overall result of the audit. The next page here, where it says "Required Communications," these are just a few other items that we always need to talk about. So, this is where we would let you know if there were any difficulties during the audit, as far as if the audit didn't go smoothly, or if we... as far as if the audit didn't go smoothly, or if we had any strange transactions that we ran across, or anything unusual that came to our attention. This is where we would let you know about it. You can see nothing like that is listed on the page here. We do have one item down at the bottom that was new and pretty significant this year. There was a new accounting standard that was implemented for leases. So this was a pretty significant undertaking. Basically, we had to take a look at every one of your lease agreements, whether it's a lease where the city is the lessor, or a lease where the city is the less C, and we have to take the approach of putting this on the books, on the balance sheet. So if you're leasing something, we have to put a lease liability on the books for your present value of your future minimum payments under that lease. And if the city is the lessor, well, then we put a receivable on the books for the present value of those future receipts. So there was a bit of an undertaking, and I think Belinda's happy to be through this first year, but overall, it only... It impacted your fund level financial statements only in the proprietary funds, so you won't see it in your general fund or anything like that. Moving on to the next page, it says "internal controls over financial reporting" at the top. As part of the audit, just like in the past, we also look at your processes and procedures that are in place behind all of those accounting activities. We have a few internal control-related items to mention here. The three listed on this page are the same three we've had in the past, and they're the same three that we report on just about every city we work with. So on the left, we're working from left to right here, the first one talks about audit adjustments. So throughout the year, for the most part, you keep your books on the cash basis of accounting, so cash receipts and dispersments are recorded as they occur. Now, during the audit, we have to do various year-end adjustments to set up things like, you know, your capital assets or long-term debt, other liabilities and receivables at the end of the year. So because we assist with some of those entries each year, then we have to make a note of that in the report. The item in the middle there, lack of segregation of duties, this is by far the most common just based on the size of your city. You're not able to fully segregate all of the different accounting functions to the extent that's desired or considered ideal. So that's something to be aware of and implement oversight wherever possible. And then on the far right, financial statement preparation. So we, as a third party, do prepare the financial statements on behalf of the city. So whenever that's the case, and there isn't an internal CPA or specialist of some sort preparing the financials, then we have to make a note of that in the financials as well. Next page, Minnesota legal compliance. Basically, as part of the audit, the state also has us review your compliance with various Minnesota statutes. They provide us with various checklists, have us look at how you're going about contracting and bidding and approving your payments, and where you're keeping your funds and investments. And we review for any non-compliance with these specific statutes. Based on our review this year, we didn't come across anything that was an issue. Everything looked clean. All right, let's move into the numbers a little bit here. For starters, we're gonna look at the general fund. So really big picture graph here, looking at 2018 through 2022, and we also have the 2022 budget on the right-hand side. Revenues in the blue, expenditures in the red, and then that green fund balance at the end of each year. So you can see, real big picture here compared to budget, revenues did exceed budget by about $176,000 this past year. Expenditures also exceeded budget by about $221,000. So over, over, excuse me, overall, you budgeted to break even for the year. Your actual increase in fund balance, including transfers between funds and other miscellaneous items, was an increase of about $14,000 for the year, so very close to budget on a net The next couple of slides here, the next couple of pages, break out the same revenues and expenses just into greater detail. So we've got a page here that looks at just the revenues, broken down into smaller categories, and then another page coming up, same layout for expenditures. Overall, you can see revenues compared to budget, very close across the board in just about every category. In fact, the only one that stands out just a little bit to me there is intergovernmental revenues. So you can see that red bar, your actual exceeded the green budgeted amounts by about $151,000. That's almost entirely related to COVID funding that you received from the federal government again during the year. Next page, same layout, looking at expenditures for the general fund. Here you can see, once again, pretty much every category, very close to budget. General government expenditures, just a little bit over budget, about $66,000 there, mostly related to employee compensation, professional services, and other miscellaneous items that ran through that area. And then on the right-hand side, debt service, that was an unbudgeted item there related to the payoff of the 2014 A bonds. You took a little bit out of the general fund to help pay off that debt early. Next page, we look at your fund balance. This is the unassigned portion of your general fund balance at the end of the year, turned into a ratio. So this is looking at it as a percentage of your annual expenditures. You have a policy in place to shoot for around 55% to 60% of the annual budgeted expenditures here. You're at about 73%, practically the same as what you were last year, so that held pretty And the next page just shows you your cash in the general fund over the past five years. You can see not much change there, hovering right around 1.5 million. All right, that does it for the general fund. The next page, we'll take a look at some of your other larger funds here. We have your debt service fund, which is basically comprised of all your different debt issuances and the sub-funds that go into making sure there's revenues and revenues in place for those debt service expenses that are required each year. So revenues of property taxes and assessments coming in there, expenditures of about $752,000 for debt, principal and interest, transfers from other funds, brings you to an overall decrease in fund balance this year of about $150,000 there. Capital project fund is also listed on this page. Most of the activity in this category relates to the Streets and Sidewalks Projects Fund, and then also your Fire Department Capital Improvements Fund. Revenues, mostly special assessments. You also had a large fire department insurance claim that came through. And then expenditures, mostly for capital outlay and some repairs and maintenance, particularly in that fire department fund. Overall, a decrease in that category of about $42,000 for the year. Next page just looks at the cash in both of those categories over the last five years. You can see both of them dropped off slightly from the previous year. Capital projects, down to a little under $1.9 million at the end of the year, and debt service at around $728,000. And with that, we'll move into your proprietary funds, take a quick look at each one of those, starting with the water fund. Once again, a five-year trend analysis, but just comparing, well, the graph here focuses largely in operations, but then the table down below shows a little more detail. Comparing your operations to the prior year, operating revenues for the water fund up about $9,600, operating expenses down about $15,000. So overall, you had operating income of about $112,000 for the year. In aggregate for the fund, after factoring in other miscellaneous items, principal and interest payments on your debt, you had an overall increase in net position of about Next page, same layout for the sewer fund. Here, operating revenues experienced a bit more of a spike. Here you had an increase in your rates and also some reimbursements that came through this past year. So overall, an increase in operating revenues there of about $373,000. Increase in expenses for operations of about $141,000. Actually, a good chunk of that increase in expenses was actually non-cash, so you have depreciation expense that's included in these funds. And when your AMPI project got placed into service and we started depreciating it in 2022, that added about $75,000 of extra depreciation expense for the year. So that's over half of the increase from the prior year right there. So overall, for the year, you had an increase in net position in this fund of about $697,000. And your last fund here is your liquor fund. So same as the, same layout as the previous two slides, looking at operations, revenues on a net basis. So this is net of costs of goods sold, up about $28,000 from the prior year. Operating expenses also up, about $51,000 from the previous year. This was, increase was mostly related to increases in salaries and wages, and then of that amount, about $22,000 was related to pension expense, which is that non-cash expense that flows through the city each year. Overall, you had a decrease in that net, or overall, you had a decrease in net position that fund of about $25,000, which was after transferring $40,000 out to the general fund. And the next page just shows the change in cash over the past five years for all three of those funds. So you can see the water fund dropped off just slightly, down to about $2,172,000. Sewer fund had a bump this year, up to about $2.7 million, and the liquor one dropped off just slightly, down to about $517,000. That covers each one of your individual funds. The next couple of pages, just like in the past, we take a look at all of these funds in aggregate, wrapped together, and put on the full accrual basis of accounting. So now this includes capital assets and all non-current liabilities, all of these items that aren't included at the fund level, all of your funds. So the first page here looks at total citywide assets over the past five years. You can see very close to what you had last year. Overall, just a little bit of a decrease in your assets on a net basis, but really your assets held pretty steady from 2021 to 2022. Liabilities, on the other hand, if you go to the next page. Your liabilities, if we exclude that green bar, just ignore that green bar for a moment there, your liabilities did drop off from 2021 to 2022 with the payments that you made on your outstanding debt, and then also the payoff of the 2014 bond issuance. You had a fairly substantial decrease in your long-term debt balances. Now, that green bar, that's of course your net pension liability that I've talked about in the past. This is your proportionate share of the statewide, the statewide projected pension liabilities for the para pension plans. So on a statewide level, the projected liabilities this past year increased significantly, so they more than doubled in the, actually approximately doubled in the general employees plan, and the police and fire plan, they went from about $772 million to about $4.3 billion. So when they revise their projections or the market fluctuates, these projected liabilities can really change quite a bit, and as a result, the proportionate share that we put on your books increases accordingly. All right, then the next couple of pages here show your future debt payments, split out between governmental funds and proprietary funds. So this is governmental funds for starters, which is debt that's being financed primarily by taxes and assessments, and you can see that the annual debt payment that's required each year drops off, starting in 2027, drops off a little further in '28, and then pretty much holds steady until about 2034, when you make your final payment, based on the existing debt that you have outstanding. Now, the next slide has the same layout, but for your proprietary funds, so your water and sewer funded debt. You can see this holds pretty steady until around early, around 2031, 2032, and then drops off to final payoff around 2034. I have one extra slide in here this year, talking about yet another accounting standard that's coming down the pipe. So I talked a little bit about the new leasing standard at the beginning of the presentation here. There's a very similar standard, standard that's about related to subscription-based IT arrangements. So basically, if you have any contracts in place where you have a software license, or maybe you're licensing or subscribing for an IT software of some sort that's three to five years, you would look at the future payments that are required under that arrangement, and once again, put a liability on the books and an offsetting asset for the fact that you get to use that software. So I'm not sure how significant of an impact this is going to have on the city. It depends on how many of these software subscription arrangements you have, but it's another, another item that's going to be going into effect with this next year's audit for 2023. Any questions?
Yes.
Okay. Bill?
Brian, the subscription.
Yep.
The liquor store pays $1,800 a year for our software.
Bill, can you pull the mic over? Thanks.
It's not mine.
Oh.
We pay about $1,800 a year for our software to be on the cloud. Is that what you're talking about? That's gonna hit my funding as well as Gaspari did it already?
Yeah, you know, it depends, it depends on a number of factors. So if there's a, there has to be a written agreement that's basically contractually obligating you to make those payments for a certain period of time. Now, if it's just something that's operating month to month, or it just renews automatically each year, then, then it won't really apply, because we can't project out how long you're gonna be required to make those payments. So that's one factor. The other factor is that even if you do have to record this, it isn't something that really impacts your expenses for the year overall. It's basically that we're grossing things up on the balance sheet, and then you've got an asset that's basically getting depreciated instead of expensing the payment, and you make the payment each year. So it's, it's really just an accounting way of presenting it. Things will get grossed up on the balance sheet, you have a liability and an asset, but your expenses each year are actually gonna be about the same as what they've been in the past.
I love Gaspari, that's why I...
Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
Back then, at our agenda, we'd be looking for a motion to approve our 2022 audit. And a huge thank you to Jen, Belinda, and Tarek for making it an easy process.
Always an easy process.
I was mostly looking at them, but I thought, right, I should include you. Okay. Huge thanks to Jen and Belinda for making the audit go smoothly. I've heard horror stories of some of your other communities and how some other cities are struggling, so great job. Is there a motion to approve the audit? So moved. I have a motion by Hertzberg. Seconded by Soini. So race to the motion there, appreciate it. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Who cares? Right. Belinda would like us to transfer ARPA monies to the fire department so that they can buy a truck. Please say yes, because I signed the check. It was approved.
I'll make the motion to transfer $200,000 from 100 general fund to 225 fire debt capital improvement fund.
Right, there's a motion by Soini, as stated on the action sheet. Is there a second?
Second.
Right, seconded by Thielen. Any further discussion? Neil?
Um, I have a little problem with the city paying $200,000, and I talked to Belinda today. Well, first, I talked to a few residents, and I asked how they liked paying a larger portion than the formula calls for, and they didn't think that's such a good idea. Then I talked to a former fighter chief, and I figured he knows what the formula and all this works, and he agreed we probably shouldn't subsidize anybody except our own obligation, so I had Belinda print me out the formula. The truck total she has is $471,358, and at that, the formula our share is $189,615. And I'm happy to pay that, whether it comes out of general fund, ARPA, or whatever, it's money at the end of the day that's gonna have to be. But I don't think we should pay more than that, and I think the other entities should pay according to the formula. So...
So, Belinda, with this transfer to the fire department capital improvement fund, this $200,000 would go for anything from the truck to the new garage doors, all of their...
Yeah, it's, you know, it gets kind of complicated with this whole building fund and small bit of fund, because it really isn't such a thing. We have the general fund in which they operate, just like admin does, just like council does, and we have one capital improvement fund for the fire department. It is divvied out based on a workbook I do to try to determine what part of the interest and fair market value goes toward each of the equipment line item within there, the building line item, and the large one. Large one is only fire trucks, everything else, but device is a small one. So it's just a word document I do to divvy that out and then I do... And so it's just a word document I do to divvy that out, and then I subtract the expenses and revenues as you would expect for small and large building. But it's one fund.
So, yes.
The formula is based on their budget, isn't it, or on...
The formula is based, and you take the, the, like, let's say I'm working out for next year. You would take the 2024 budget, general fund budget for the fire department, you would subtract the 2023 amount of state aid we get, and that's your number that you need to arrive at. And then there's three categories that help determine what percentage of each entity pays on that dollar amount. It is the population, it is the tax evaluation, and it is the average number possible for a ten-year average period. And then they each give a 33% part of that total dollar to make up what each entity pays.
So I guess the question, though, going back to what I was asking, is, end of the day, the city's only going to pay its 189,000 or whatever it is for the truck, and that extra 11 will sit in the capital improvement fund for whatever next project.
Whatever this, whatever the council decides. You know, I, when I transfer and do the, that workbook I talk about, the only time I really do that, if I need it throughout the year, I'll do it, it's basically for their technical meeting that they have. So I would probably put that 200,000 into the large equipment, because that was the discussion how at the time was to put that 200,000 toward a truck. But ultimately, you can use money for any of those. It's been talked about using part of the building fund, the building money to cover the truck.
Right.
Because it's all in the same fund.
It's all the same fund.
So your, what you said, Sean, was correct, then?
Yes.
Yeah.
And this comes, I mean, we talked about this at our retreat last year over at the Legion, in terms of how are we going to fund it because of how underfunded that had been. And I did reach out at that time to the township and all of the other entities involved, and asked if they would be willing to contribute any of their ARPA money. No one responded. We did hear at the township's annual meeting a couple of months ago that they're sitting on, was it 100 they have?
I think it's a little bit less, but yeah.
Maybe 70?
Something like that.
Between 75 and 100,000, Ainsville Township has, that they've not allocated anything for. I know there's at least a resident out there who wants them to allocate that money towards a library. I don't know what they're planning on, or if they're just going to use it to offset other expenses. That's...
And we do have to remember, the way that that capital improvement fund has grown over the years is by the transfers that we do from the general fund department, fire department, to that capital improvement, just like we transfer money to your savings account, for your checking account. And that general fund transfer is part of the allocation from all the entities.
Well, one of the discussions we had last year about transferring this 200,000 for the fire department from ARPA was because of how underfunded the fire department has been over the years. So this is, can be looked at as a catch...
I also believe that there's some more money left over for our server.
Uh, yeah, there's more than that, yeah.
All right, well, let Neil add something else to it.
I, I just don't feel it's our responsibility as the city taxpayers to fund the fire department when it's an entity of ten subdivisions. And their responsibilities, I mean, like, on this fire truck, Irving Township's 9,000, Muntz and 4,000. So, I mean, the formula, we all agree, is basically fair, and I have no problems with the formula. I have a problem over subsidizing other entities.
But if I understand it right, this ARPA money was just a one-time gift, wasn't it, from the federal government?
True, but we can use it for many things. We could use it for the empty park shelter, different, possibly even the downtown project.
Are all the restrictions lifted on?
There are a few restrictions. There aren't very many, because we claim the standard deduction. You can't use it toward retirement funds.
Salaries.
And these salaries. I'm not sure if it doesn't use it on bonded projects. I'm not a very certain sure on that.
But it could be used on the empty park shelter.
Well, we already have it budgeted according to using this for the truck, plus, I mean, plus we're already getting money from the townships to capital improvement.
Yes, there's no budget staying for it. We're going to use that, and that was pure parked at the council retreat, that that's what the council, they wanted, buy the server, put the ARPA money, put 200,000 toward the fire truck, and the remainder, Jen and I requested for electronic storage, which was last retreat. But there is no early budget for that. That was just a mere...
Well, explain what you were saying, Sean, to make that clear.
What are you talking about?
About how the 200,000 goes into the large improvement fund.
Yeah, it's going into the capital improvement fund, so it's going to fund our 189,000 for the fire truck, it's going to fund, Andy's talking about an airline project, so, I mean, that's a couple thousand dollars, it's not much. That will fund that, it will fund a number of other things.
Repair on the building?
Uh, yeah, repairs on the building, things like that, which goes generally. I suppose what we could do, there's a motion to transfer the 200,000. I, we made a commitment to the fire department that we were going to do that. I don't want to take that away. I, I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to asking that whatever's left of the 189,000, that that be devoted to small equipment or the building fund, instead of the large equipment truck fund. But that way, the department is still getting what we have promised to send over. Because that's something we budgeted for last year, following our retreat.
I think, given...
The way the money's going to have to be made out somewhere along the way. Megan?
Given the state of the cascade system and everything else, I think that they're going to need some money, so...
I mean, just, I, this is a perception, but it just seems to me that the townships are going to have to put in their share of those other things.
Yes.
So we would be putting in our 89% to building improvements, but everybody else would be putting in their, their share of it when that expense comes up. So it's not like we would be subsidizing them, they're going to have to pay when other projects come off, they're going to have to pay.
It's, it's one, like Belinda said, it's one fund. And when it comes to paying for the truck, they're going to take what they need, whether it's 189,000 or 250,000. So, you know, in that, within that capital improvement fund, you've got, if you do this transfer, you've got, of course, the 200,000 dollars that we are transferring. Plus, I believe, without including the other figures, we're making 220,000 approximately in the building for the large equipment portion now. So you still don't have even those two figures to buy that truck. And I have accounts that have been made to borrow or use the money, and probably building the money of that, pull some money out of there, and I, I think there's like 300-some-thousand maybe in there. But you're not going to have the entities contributing the kind of money that Neil asked me to draw today to look at unless we have a meeting with them and specify that you want them to contribute that. It's going to come out of that reserve fund in which everybody's been contributing all these years, but they're not going to pay extra like the city does unless you have a meeting set up and...
I guess I'd feel better if we did, and that could be agreed upon.
Well, it doesn't have to be done right now, because the truck isn't, it's got to be ready until next year.
I think they want, we have to pay for it, and we have to...
The chance, we have to pay the 1,000.
Pay it, yeah.
So that, that bill is on your, on your, on your, on your, on your, on your, on your , on your, 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 the general fund, our ARPA monies, to Fund Two Twenty-Five, the Fire Department Capital Improvement Fund. That was motioned by Soini, seconded by Thielen. Any last thoughts before I call the question? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. All right, we have an application, page twenty-one of our agenda for a parade closing. School is looking to use six oh five Lake Avenue for staging and doing a parade on Sunday, June fourth, before graduation. Everything's in order as far as I can see, it looks like they're doing the same route they did last year. I don't have any concerns.
Make the motion to approve the Painesville area school's parade permit and allow them to use six oh five Lake Avenue for staging.
Motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Soini, seconded by Hertzberg, approving the school's parade permit and allowing them use of six oh five Lake Avenue. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, temporary street closing, page twenty-four, Yarman's Car Show, looking to close off their section of Deekman Drive, June seventeenth, from seven AM to two. Same section that they did last year, that seemed to work without too many issues. Motion would be in order.
Motion to approve the temporary street closing for Yarman Ford to close a section of Deekman Drive on Saturday, June seventeenth, from seven AM to two PM.
All right, there's a motion by Soini, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Beck, as stated on the action sheet, approving the street closure. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, liquor store staffing, Bill.
Uh, yes, Adam Jensen, uh, is back home from school, he's graduated, and we had him on as temporary summer help, he did help us last winter as well. Uh, he has graduated, I would like to move him from part-time summer help to regular part-time so he can work. You know, summer helping, he can only work up to so many hours, uh, with the resignation, uh, Megan, I think we could really use his help this summer. And, uh, maybe future, so, we'd like to get him going as a part-time help. Yes?
Uh, with putting him on and Megan leaving, are you still gonna be a person short, or...
We have one that is medically, right now, we're waiting, but I think we're gonna be fine with what I have.
And be okay?
I think we can make it, yes.
Well, with that, I'll make the motion to move Adam Jensen, liquor store clerk, from part-time seasonal to regular, part-time, up to thirty-two hours a week.
Okay, there's a motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Soini regarding Adam Jensen moving from seasonal to part-time. Any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Good, thank you, I'm gonna go with the fire training if that's okay.
Nope. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
All right, um, from our recent retreats and working sessions, we talked about doing a public meeting at Queen Bee's, talk about twenty twenty-seven, or possibly twenty twenty-six street project. Uh, we talked to Chuck a little bit about it last week, he's gonna get us some maps and segments and things like that, that'll look pretty, so that people can see kind of what we're thinking about. When we were meeting at Queen Bee's, we talked to Doris, she thought January, or July thirty-first would work for her, looking from five to seven PM with some refreshments. There's a proposed number on here, I'm wondering if we shouldn't give a budget for the refreshments, though. Just set a line item for that. Okay. Any thoughts, or anyone wanting to make a motion here?
Question for Chuck, you have estimates for, by that time?
Yeah, we can have a question.
I'm sure that'll be a question for...
Just so you're aware, that date, I am not available. It's kind of a big deal.
Repeat it because it was a fifth Monday, and there's usually no conflicts on fifth Mondays.
Go back to the drawing table, pick another date?
Yep, we'll pick another date.
But I'll double check. If there's a possibility, I can switch things.
Okay, just put all the, you know, children.
How about we do this, why don't we call for a motion, we'll tentatively schedule it for July thirty-one, somebody set a budget, and then if that doesn't work for Ron, then Jen will collaborate and bring us some dates back for our next agenda. But that way, we've got something.
How much do we think we need for a budget?
Yeah, how much do you think we need for a budget on? Two hundred, three? Do we even need to do it, since it's gonna be within Tark's spending limit anyway?
Probably not, because I'm really frugal, so.
She is frugal.
Yeah. She's gonna be bringing the things herself.
Doris will make cookies.
You know, I, yeah, I...
We don't need a lot, 'cause...
I think it's gonna be ice water, coffee, and...
Cash bar.
Yeah.
Maybe some crackers and cheese, and, you know, maybe something sweet, and it's gonna be low-key.
Yep.
All right, so yeah, if we want to set a motion, uh, for a special city council meeting, tentatively for July thirty-one, uh, and if it doesn't work for Ron, we'll come back with other dates for our next meeting.
I will make that motion.
Motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Soini, setting a special city council meeting, tentatively for Monday, July thirty-one, for the twenty twenty-seven street project at Queen Bee's from five to seven. Any further discussion? Or none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? All right, Tark on the city lots.
Hi, um, we've been approached by a local realtor, uh, who's interested in representing us on our residential lots in the Heatherwood area. And, uh, obviously, uh, they wanna be able to sell these lots on our behalf, they're already representing the adjacent ones on South Street. Uh, and, uh, I asked them if they're, they'll be willing to be part of a bidding process if the council decides to do so, and they said probably not, because they'll probably bid higher, uh, they are confident that they'll be able to sell them, since they've sold the, uh, no other realtor except for them has sold lots in that area. But I asked if, you know, as an incentive for us to consider, uh, offering this to a realtor, would, would they give a timeline, say, would they say they can sell these by the end of summer, or by X date? And they said, no, they can't give us a commitment on time. So, um, I'm not sure how far we can go with this, then.
Okay, what have we been doing to try and get them sold?
Uh, we've been advertising, uh, obviously, uh, people call and talk to us about it, uh, I've talked to some people, Jennifer has handled quite a bit. And yeah, just light marketing like that.
Where are we advertising?
Uh, we did advertise in the lake guide, uh, we advertise, I mean, obviously, we have our brochures here, and before we give the billboard to the township, uh, or sorry, for the lodging tax, we're advertising on the billboard.
And on the website, I assume?
On the website, it's mentioned, but it's not like an ad, it's not prominent.
We have a copy of the lots, the map of the lots on the website?
Yeah, it's on the website, but for commercial and residential.
And the housing incentives?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not in favor of using them.
The only thing I could, uh, I'm definitely not in favor of a realtor trying to help us. I'm not sure Santa Claus could sell these this year. Interest is up and lumber is not down, so Nick of us, uh, a lot, so, we may just have to keep plugging away like we are. When we hired Derek, that's part of his job, and it's, it's, it is what it is, and maybe a sign up there, I believe Mr. Flanders has a sign on city property that we could help to move and put ours up there, advertising our, well, we got left twelve, no, twenty?
They're not the most...
They're not the most...
Yeah.
They're not the most popular ones.
Sign eleven lots for sale from twenty-two to twenty-four thousand, whatever, and, uh, maybe Facebook, keep advertising, that's all you can do. But I definitely, let's stay with what we got.
I'd only be in favor if we could, if, if the realtor would give a timeline, meaning, hey, by, by this date, we'll sell them all. Then, then that's a good incentive, but without a, a timeline, then, like Neil said, we can just keep doing what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of it, I don't, I don't think there's, I mean, hearing proposals doesn't really hurt us any, I guess.
But they didn't wanna do them.
Well...
And I, we don't have any other locals.
I'm stuck with, you know, if we hire a realtor to do it, we're looking at commissions between four and six percent, depending on what proposals come in.
Which brings it up.
No, his proposal would have been seven percent.
But if we bring it up for proposals, I'm saying it's likely to go down, but we're still looking at a percentage, and, like what Neil said, part of what we hired Tark for was to do the hiring, and, you know, I think if we came in here, we said, these are the, the things that we've done, X, Y, and Z, we've been very aggressive, there are signs out, there's that, but I don't know that we've done anything, um, significant. I'm not ready to spend the money until we give it a good, a good shot.
Well, then you're increasing the price of the lots, and they're as nice as the ones we sold for less.
Yeah.
That's gonna be a tough sell.
And I think with the, uh, the prospect of, with Nature Energy and stuff coming to town, we should just let this ride out for a little while longer, 'cause these, these lots may end up selling on their own.
Well, it is a tough sell this year because of interest rates, but it doesn't hurt to do a little bit more advertising, especially like Neil said, put a sign out there.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
I did have one inquiry about the lots in the last thirty-eight. So that's, that's good, um, but I would, you know, concur with Gene, these are, especially on the Kira Corp, the least desirable lots, because they're adjacent to the rental trucks. They're oddly shaped, they're smaller lots, um, so, you know, that's why they're cheaper lots also. So...
Yeah, I think if we were sitting here and, and we had a, a marketing campaign that wasn't panning out, I'd say, let's have that conversation, but right now, I'm not in favor of even getting proposals.
On page thirty-one, I added up the available lots is thirty-eight. So... We still have room for growth.
We do. All right, anyone willing to make a motion on this, otherwise we'll move on?
Nope.
Okay. Going on then to the trail crack sealing project on page fifty-one, Ron or Chuck?
All right, thank you, uh, last year, we crack sealed, uh, I'd say a little over half of the trail, um, we'd like to wrap it up this year and finish it out, we'd get two quotes, uh, first one, um, is from Camco, one oh three there, that's the law, and that is for the equipment and labor alone, and the township, and they purchased the material themselves along with the streets that they do, and their price is eighty-five cents, so we have a total of a dollar eighty-eight per pound, comes out to what we estimated to forty-one hundred there, which we would be responsible for, for our half of it, which would be two thousand sixty-eight dollars.
We're pleased with what Camco did around town?
Yes, yes, I think he did a nice job.
I'm not convinced that the kids they had doing it were more than thirteen years old, but...
You're just getting old, that's all.
I, I might be just getting old, but walking Charlie home from school that day and seeing them, they looked like babies trying to manage that equipment, so.
Yeah, the girls would all get in the truck.
Must have been. So they were supervised at least. All right.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve two thousand sixty-eight dollars for crack sealing the trail with funds to come from the trail CIP.
If there's a motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Beck. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? My proposed resolution on no mow May, uh, this is something that I asked the environmental board to look into, um, Megan reported on it in our last council meeting, and Ron did as well, that, uh, you know, one of the issues we have is our city ordinance says we're gonna require things to be kept to, I don't know, I can't recall exactly if there's an eight inches, or what this defined limit is, uh, six or eight, something like that. But I, I took a look at what some other communities are doing with no mow May, and a number of them have the same ordinances that we do, and they've just issued resolutions supporting the project and directing staff not to enforce the ordinance during the month of May. What no mow May is, and I'll just give a brief overview, but I assume that everyone's read it, basically, there's a movement to support pollinators, um, as the bees and the monarchs and things like that have been threatened with habitat loss due to pesticides and the loss of their habitats, um, bees are rapidly becoming endangered, and if they go away, we don't have anything to fertilize crops, or anything else that feed us and take care of things. So, the proposition of no mow May is by keeping your grass long, you're not disturbing any of the pollinator habitats that form over the winter, when they settle down to hibernate and stay warm, you're giving them room to grow, the added, yes, there might be some weed and things during that time, that helps provide early season nectar and other things that they need to survive and help support them until everything else blooms up. So this is something that a number of communities around the state and the country have been doing and pushing for, I think that we should do the same thing, it's not mandatory, nobody has to partake in it, but it's just saying that if anybody chooses to do so, we're not gonna send a mowing crew out there until, the resolution, I think, says the first Monday or the second Monday in June. And the reason for that is that it gives people that first weekend in June in order to get things cleaned up and taken care of. Ron did send me a news article from Care Eleven, I believe it was, one of the local news stations, um, there's a scientist at the University of Minnesota, who works in their turf grass division, who said, look, the science is kind of still out on whether or not this supports pollinators, we don't really know that it helps, but what we do know is that going that long without putting your lawn might be detrimental to your grass. I still think that this is something we should adopt, if people want to damage their grass, that's kind of their prerogative, um, it's all optional, nothing here is mandatory, it would just be saying, yes, we're authorizing participation in this program, and, uh, we're gonna start enforcing our mowing ordinance after the first full weekend in June, any noxious weeds or anything like that would still be enforced. That's what the resolution says, that's what it's out there for.
I'd like to comment, comment on that if I could. You know, I'm working, we're close to with, uh, agronomy, um, I know that when your yard, uh, the grass in your yard is a certain height, it will start to reseed itself, therefore, if you wait long enough for it to reseed itself, reseed itself, then, then more, you're gonna be adding, uh, new seeds to your lawn, and also, it's going to provide nitrogen, which will help the lawn grow. So as far as, you know, the jury being out where, you know, this is gonna be helpful or not, excuse me, um, it will be more than helpful, there's a lot of farmers out there who will plant clover, and then purposely, um, uh, plow it under, because that will produce the nitrogen for the, uh, um, the soil, which helps the lawn and the crops out, so, that's just a thought that I'm in favor for this.
I guess I have a little problem. A lot of people take a lot of pride in their lawn, and they spend a lot of money, uh, total lawn sprays, and there's no dandelions, no weeds, and if your neighbor has a zillion dandelions, it doesn't make for good neighborship relations if this happens. I have nothing against the no mow, but I think it should maybe just be in certain areas, some of the city, uh, land that we mow, maybe we shouldn't mow in May, but for this to truly be successful, we should probably have some type of clover or flowers that, grass itself, the bees, I mean, they need a clover blossom, or the alfalfa blossom, or flower blossoms, the problem is spring, is your flowers aren't blooming, so, I know bees probably struggle, and they probably like the dandelions, but I'm not sure it's good to create good neighborhood relations by going this route. I think we could look at Pacific, you know, like Bill Fuchs from behind this building to the river, uh, maybe, uh, nature park, uh, trail guards, maybe that whole area down there should be wildflowers, and not Norbertia, uh, different things like that. But to encourage people not to mow their lawn, I'm not sure that's the, the right avenue.
I get that, I will say, I, when friends owns owned our house, I can only imagine how much they paid total lawn care and gum spray for dandelions, I know what they paid the city for their water bill, and I know that we didn't have dandelions out there for about two years with all the pesticides that they had put on it, um, or pesticide, excuse me, uh, but now, they grow wild, and, I mean, I could just speak for myself, regardless of mowing, they're going to be there, and, and they will crop up, and...
But, but if they don't grow to seed?
Not, not always, so, but, you know, there are still plenty of places around town where they could, and they may, and likely do, so. I think back to this is optional, and you're right, that those who have that pride in their lawn, they want that beautiful green turf, and the neighbors who do it would hope that they're gonna take some consideration in mind as to how they operate, but this gives people the option without the city saying, we're not going to let you do it. I, I agree, we need to look at, at what the city can do long-term as well, but this just gives residents the option to, to do this if they want to. There are other cities, like the city of Edina goes so far as to spend fifteen hundred or two thousand dollars and give everyone lawn signs, and they devote city staff to registering houses that are doing it, things, that just seems absurd to me.
That's the same as Saint Peter that I'm reading here.
Yeah, yeah, there, you know, I don't think we need to do yard signs and stuff like that, but just say...
It's an option, yeah.
Just let it be out there, let, if you choose to do this, and if that's what you wanna do, you have the right to do it. That's all I'm kind of getting at.
There's a section here about trying to keep your neighbors happy, too.
What?
Trying to keep your neighbors happy, a section here talking about like mowing a buffer, things like that, but...
Yeah.
Some neighbors can't be kept happy, um, but, yeah, um, but there's also, I mean, there are options here, too, within this program, where, you know, somebody could have an entire yard that is pollinators, you know, and that would, that could carry over to the neighbor's yard, but I don't, pride is such a subjective term, you know, because somebody could have a meadow in their backyard and take great pride in it, just because it isn't this square turf that looks pristine, isn't, I don't know, it's a tough one, there's always a, a line between individual properties and not being hard on your neighbors. But, I mean, I guess, we could give it a try, and then if there's, you know, some kind of disastrous dandelion issue, then we don't do it next year, maybe.
I just don't think there's any harm in us authorizing it.
Yeah.
And those who are going to be poor neighbors and let dandelions be an issue, they're going to, they're going to be there no matter what we do.
Well, we're not telling people not to mow their lawns, we're saying, mow it if you wanna, just...
Yeah, do or don't, it's all up to you.
If you don't want to, then you won't be ticketed for one month, half the month is already over.
Oh, it works, can be a lot of other things.
But the letters will go all up whenever the magic day is in June.
Right. Yeah, it'd be the second Monday in June. But again, the reason for the second Monday is that if the first is, you know, well, if June one is a Monday...
It's not this year.
I know, but hypothetically, if it were, this is saying you get that first full weekend to get out there and get things cleaned up and tidied. It's up to the council to decide, um, I would appreciate your support and a motion, but otherwise, we will move forward.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen proclaiming no mow May in the city of Painesville.
Okay, there's a motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Beck, approving resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirteen proclaiming no mow May in the city of Painesville, is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion does carry four to one. Ron, on a lease agreement, page two of our update here.
Great, thank you, thank Neil for catching this, uh, today, and brought to our attention that the, it was on there that the rate was fifty dollars per month, obviously, that was incorrect, it, uh, was fifty dollars is the additional that they had to pay, they had signed a contract, or their old contract had it through the entire year, so, um, the rate is one hundred fifty dollars per month, and what they owe for the remainder of the year is fifty dollars. Well, obviously, this was a pilot who has been here a number of years already, so, and he wishes this day.
Thank you for catching that, Neil. There are motion to approve the teehanger lease agreement between the city of Painesville and Jay Brown.
I will make the motion to approve airport teehanger lease agreement between city of Painesville and Jay Brown.
All right, thank you, sir. This is a motion by Hertzberg, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Thielen, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. All right, keep going there, on the publication, page twelve.
Yes, so the other resignation that we have is Officer O'Manic has submitted his resignation, um, effective last Thursday, uh, we are currently in the hiring process to fill, um, projected vacancies and current vacancies, so I don't know that there's a lot of need to do anything there, so just looking for a motion to accept his resignation.
Okay. All right, with that being said, a motion would be in order, accepting the resignation of Officer O'Manic, effective immediately.
So moved.
Motion by Thielen, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg, any further discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? With that, was he still on probation, or, I can't recall where that was at?
Depends after we adopt.
We extended it.
Okay. All right, so then we're going to page one oh eight of our agenda, pick up from old business, we've made a modification to the council per diem ordinance, which just claims that the per diem's only eligible for meetings outside of the city limits, that change has been made, brought back, looking for a motion on the revised resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, setting the council mileage memo, per diem, and mileage reimbursement.
I'll make the motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash twelve, setting council member per diem and mileage reimbursement.
And there's a motion by Soini, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Hertzberg. Seconded by Hertzberg, setting the, or approving Resolution twenty-two-three dash twelve. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? None? On page one-eleven, this is a pickup, this was tabled a couple of years ago by motion. Um, Policies and Procedures did look at it and have a discussion over amending the ordinance. The recommendation coming out of Policies and Procedures is to leave things as is. Here we are at the council level again.
Joe presentation.
How would the council like to move forward?
I would like to make a motion that this doesn't come up for forty-eight months. Uh, we've discussed it, I think this will be the fourth time, and, uh, we don't have the personnel to enforce the ordinance that she proposed. And, uh, like we said two years ago, the chicken flu is a serious thing. And last month, chicken flu, uh, was reported in southern Minnesota in a backyard flock. And that's the end of my discussion.
There's a motion that this not be discussed for forty-eight months. Before we have any further discussion, is there a second to that motion? Second. Seconded by Thielen, okay, any discussion on the motion to table discussion for forty-eight months?
I wish there, we could get a better feel about how the majority of people feel about things. Because this just seems like a tough one to get a grasp on. Because I, I personally, you know, even though I know it's difficult, especially when you see, it seems like every day there's somebody with, um, a pet issue, a missing pet, or somebody found a pet, or, and we just don't have, as Neil said, the staff to take care of those things, you know, I don't know if chickens escape as often as dogs and cats do. So I don't know if that is even an issue, but I just, it seems like, you know, it's one of those things where people have really strong feelings until it comes time to have a meeting and come to a meeting and discuss those feelings. And I just, I personally, I'm pretty neutral on it, I just wish that we had a better understanding of where most of the public stood. And I, I don't think that we do, but can we even, can we vote to table something for forty-eight months? Seems like a very long time.
We can, uh...
You can, you can vote to table, but, you know, you're gonna have different council members, somebody could bring up in the future. It's really, a motion to table is probably not binding on a future council, but, you know, it, it, it doesn't harm anything to, to approve that motion, but I don't, I don't think it probably gives it to come out, but it's, you know, it's just...
It, it's the fourth time, and I think usually, three strikes and you're out.
I understand this, and I'm just saying, you know, that another council could decide they wanted to, they want to consider it, you know, this...
And that would be a comment too.
But, so if it isn't binding, then should we just say until after the next election, because it could be different then?
No, that's fine.
Well, I think that, um, a time limit ought to be put on this because of, with avian flu, uh, especially affecting, uh, the, um, Turkey economy in the area. Um, I think we, the state of Minnesota needs to inform, or whomever, needs to inform the public, um, uh... The best way to do this, uh, without risk to, uh, the economy in the area, I mean, if somebody has a backyard flock and, and they come to find out that they're, that they have to be destroyed because of avian flu, that was none of their fault, uh... We're just gonna be opening the door to a whole new set of circumstances. I think if, well, once we can get a better grasp on where this is at, I think, uh, to tell you the truth, I'd be, uh, I would like to be more informed on, on where we're at with this.
I don't disagree, I'm just saying that since forty-eight months isn't legally binding, or isn't binding because we could have, um, you know, new council members, I think it'd be just easier to say until after the next election, it seems less troublesome.
So that would be two years.
It'd be two years.
Yeah.
I...
I will say, I... I voted with the motion to do, to table discussion the last time around, because we had other things that we were dealing with, and I still stand by that decision. I don't support it this time, not even until after the next election. Not because I support chickens in town, I'm not there, for all the reasons that Neil and Paul have discussed. But I want to leave open the door where, if there is a good citizen push, and they can get together and maybe find a council member who is willing to support it and do the work in bringing a full ordinance to our attention and, and show how much support's here. I wanna leave that door open. We haven't seen that kind of push before, it's always been one person, a couple people, and, and sort of a push to have the council do all of the work and figure it all out. But if there's a group of people that wants to do the behind-the-scenes work and come to something that looks like a relatively final type of proposal, and that would include talking with the chief and figuring out enforcement and things like that, and then come to us, I, I wanna leave open that possibility. So that's where I'm at. Gene, we haven't heard from you.
Well, personally, I don't have a problem with them.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, and I think, if you're gonna have dogs or cats, you take care of them, and if you have chickens, you're gonna take care of them, because they're an investment, and I agree with you, Sean, that if there's a group that wants to come and have all the, the ducks in a row, and... I don't know. I'm not opposed to chickens myself, so...
It's just, yeah, it's difficult, because when push comes to shove, it seems like the last times we've discussed it, it's always the people who don't want chickens in their neighborhood who seem to come together and make their presence and their voice known, so...
And I think that's...
That's what it, you know...
That's telling.
Our, our personal feelings on chickens or not chickens are not the, you know, issue we're supposed to, so, I guess...
Well, the rules are made by those who show up.
Yeah?
Those who show up and invoice their opposition.
And that's what's happened.
And that's what's going to happen. I, so the motion before us, I'll call the question on whether or not we table discussion on this for forty-eight months. I haven't heard an amendment to the motion, so that's where we are. Um, all those in favor of tabling discussion on this for forty-eight months indicate by saying aye.
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 All opposed? Aye. Motion does not prevail, votes three to two.
I'll make a new motion for twenty-four months. Back to where we started, but I can live with it.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Hertzberg, to table discussion for twenty-four months, seconded by Brick. Any further discussion on this?
So I think that, you know, those two years, that they could kind of, if there are people who, if there's going to be a citizen push for this, they'd have their time to get their, I guess not ducks in a row, their chickens in a row for, um, what they wanna do and see where the avian flu issue is lying, so I think that's a decent amount of time for them and for others.
I agree with you. Uh, here's the thing that I forgot to say earlier, when we were talking about forty-eight months. By putting a time limit on this, are we inviting that conversation in two years' time?
I think we're going to invite it regardless of anything that we do or don't do.
I don't know if it'll ever, um...
No, it won't, but my thought is if, if we put a timeline and we say, this is coming up again on these dates...
Well, the, like Megan was saying, there could be a new council.
Yep.
And, uh, would give them an opportunity to look at this item.
Yeah.
And I think that's fair.
Any further discussion on twenty-four month provision? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Aye. Okay, motion does carry, votes three to two. Right, then with that, that concludes the business on our packet here, we do have a few notices on here. Five-year construction program meeting with Stearns County. Ron's gonna talk to them as well about our potential street project, as that would affect them. Vibrant's doing their construction notice. Just a note to everyone here, I did get one resident expressed some concern, I don't recall if it was directly or just a generic Facebook post, about their yard being dug up. And Ron and I directed them to call City Hall if they didn't get a response from Vibrant, and you could give them numbers of people to call. Not that you'd fix it, but that you could at least put them in touch with the right people.
They were out last week fixing holes by our place.
Yep, we've got letters from Avon Plastics, ordinance hearing from Stearns County, our audit reports, liquor reports, all that's online. Police Department report available at the end, and then what Ron mentioned is report, the invitation to the Trail Guards grand opening of the Riverview Path.
I have just one question before we can, to, to judges. Where are we at with Pete Yarman?
Jordy Take, Sheriff's Comp.
Um, last, he communicated with me, it was just over a week ago, and he said he would, he's gonna consider the, uh, the terms that we came up with, uh, many months ago last fall, I would say.
Okay.
So he hasn't gotten back to me yet, but if I don't hear from him soon, I will follow up again, but he's, he's back on board again.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, next Tuesday's the Stearns County Municipal League meeting.
Yes.
In Kimball.
Respond to Tarr, RSVP.
Yeah, three people have not RSVP'd from this council.
We'll need to carpool as per our...
The stuff here?
Yes.
Stearns County Municipal League.
Kimball.
I just have two comments. I thank Avon Plastics for the letter, because I was a little upset that they weren't here. The letter isn't the same, but it explains...
City.
I thank them for the letter, and then on page one-third, I talked to Tyrick about this a little bit this afternoon, and I'm not sure, I kinda listened to the Stearns County Commissioner meeting. It sounds like they want a one-year table of planning and development. And that could affect our nature-energy situation. I said maybe we should get this ball rolling, so it could be ahead of the, of the, uh, meeting. But they wanna change that ordinance.
Imagine that they're doing ordinance that affects planning within cities.
It seems vague to me.
I don't know.
You don't have a choice.
I was wanting to make sure it doesn't mess us up for the development. Yeah, I don't know.
They'd have the jurisdiction to do it.
No, this is, this is zoning that would exist in the county, in townships that don't have their own zoning already, but it wouldn't affect cities.
Well, good, because that certainly...
All right. If we want to carpool to the Stearns County Municipal League, I have room enough to drive all of us. Just let me know, enough in advance, so that I can move car seats.
Mark, we don't.
Okay, Neil's coming.
Great question.
I'm a permanent carpooler, so, you know.
All right, Paul, you gotta make it, you're the last one here.
Are you going?
Sure.
Next Tuesday?
Excited.
Give them a little time for that.
Are we taking these other things?
I'll have to get back with you on that.
All right.
Exactly, I've been asked to go back to work tonight.
I didn't know sometimes things are sensitive.
We'll get to play this game again tomorrow.
Well, you did it during the meeting, didn't you, Sean?
For what? What, yeah, huge...